Test, test.
Hi, how are you?
Absolutely. Almost. Hi. True. You're sitting there. Sit right. He's got ten days on about three months.
Yeah. Great.
We should see. Not as long as I'm ready. What's that? What are you doing? Sitting all. And so. Oh, totally easy. Again, get by my. All I did. I'm sorry. I saw. He said that like. I don't know. I think. It's a. Like your turn. Yeah. Ever bring it to a lot.
I have.
You go one of these. And especially around the. Just enough to be able to. So. So. Then what is that? It'd be extremely. That's nice that screen. So. Well. After you're. Sitting on. Yeah. All right. I didn't expect it was supposed.
Yeah.
Did you? That's so. Yeah. That was. It's hard to say.
I.
Say. I don't.
But.
Be careful. That's. I guess that's. Yeah. It's getting a little bit.
That's.
So. These are what I'm saying. She's. Yeah.
Thank you.
I'm. I'm. This. You. That's why I break with some stuff.
I it's been the best work day ever.
Quick. I'm like. Yeah. If I don't get it.
What's the side?
Uh. Motorheads. The. Basically, I post this out. It's on. Seven. Well. I want some. Motorheads. It's not. This is the original. Original. But I was like. I heard about it. I heard. I heard you make some. I forgot the man did it. That is what. Wait. About.
You're pretty sad.
Seven? Seven of you. One. Three.
Um.
That should be. All. You. But. But. Bob. Awesome. I guess. Oh.
Yeah. Um. It's. Oh. Okay. That one. Yeah. It's. Oh. Take it apart. I don't know. I don't remember. So. They took. Right. Like thousand. I don't know. That. They. She. Oh. No. Well. That's.
Well.
That was.
Bring with my dad. Again, can I? Don't look at it. Don't look. I'm trying to fly. Probably have to tell the other two youngies. Hundred percent of going. This one. This one. The thing I would do this. I do it. But yeah, that's. No. And my switches. And it. You. Are. Yeah. Right. That would be. I should be. Oh, oh. And. So. Yeah. How are you doing this? If I get this with my foot, work this on top. Yeah. That's it. I'll take. Already. I'm sure. But. I feel. Uh. That. Oh. It's nice. We get. Yes. Yeah. The last. Oh.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our special board meeting for Monday, June ninth. Mr. Vistakazian, if you could call roll, please.
Dr. Shively. Mrs. Patrick.
Here.
Dr. Beckpulley.
Here.
Dr. White.
Here.
Mr. Rashudi.
Here.
Mrs. Levy. Mr. Fashionato.
Here.
Mr. Lozey. Mrs. Shankle.
Here.
Seven members present, we have a court.
All right. Thank you. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you could please join me in a moment of silent meditation, I ask you to remember our student, Freedom Student David Nagu passed away, his family, friends, and the entire Freedom community dealing with a very, very difficult week to end the school year. Thank you. All right. First item on the list is courtesy the floor for agenda items only. Everybody for courtesy the floor. Seeing none, I have nothing to report. Dr. Silva, anything to report?
No report.
All right. That'll take us into our recommendations of the administration. Can I have a motion to approve items seven oh one, which is the personnel attachment, seven oh two is the budget, and seven oh three is the Homestead Farmstead annual exclusion. Motion to approve those. Mr. Rashudi, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Dr. Shively, thank you. Mr. Vistakazian, you have some slides to share, some information prior.
Yeah, just two minor slides. Not much has changed since the last time we met, so we just simply sharpened our pencil, adjusted the state revenues and some of the expenditures. What we're hearing is the budget is likely not to pass from the state side until at least September, so let's hold our breath and hope for the best. And this year, we don't even have our federal allocation, so we're hoping that those come through as budgeted flat. So if we go to the next page, these are the assumptions we're making, given all the unknowns and uncertainty, so we're going to go with a hundred percent of the governor's proposal for BEF and SEF, fifty percent for the adequacy proposal. We're not making any adjustments for cyber charter, the real estate increase of four point three percent, and level of funding from twenty four, twenty five. All that being said, we're going to balance the budget with about five point seven million from our capital, I'm sorry, capital from our fund balance, and then we will revisit the budget once we have a little bit more clarity on the picture. So those are the assumptions we're making as we move forward with the budget.
All right. Thank you. Questions, comments from anyone? Mr. Lozey?
So this question, I'm going to pose it to you, Mr. Vistakazian, but it may be appropriate for Dr. Silver or Dr. Burris to step in. So I see that we budgeted, and when this was presented before, I was the lone holdout. In discussions, I understand where we're moving, or clarify presentation of what the budget as presented means in terms of classroom and building staffing. So I understand that we're not really eliminating folks and that we're looking at things, we're basically attrition, but also what is that, like, what does that really mean? So while we have attrition, who's leaving what they were doing and now going to a classroom?
Good question. We we have in our savings by attrition really protected the classroom experience. So class class sizes in this budget in a way we determine them is the same. We haven't moved anybody out of classroom positions accordingly. The reductions here are outside, they're in the next ring outside of the classroom, or in the professional support area, professional development area. So the classroom, as always, that will always be the budget recommendation that I make. We try to protect the learning in the classroom as the last alternative for reductions, and we didn't have to go there this time. Thank you.
Mr. Rashudi. Thank you. I just want to say I think the administration did a good job of looking for some of those position eliminations that were through attrition and trying to find some savings. I would just say I think we as a board and the district in general have to continue to look for that next year because we've seen the numbers. So, you know, four point three percent this year, but I don't know if we can do that next year. So it's kind of, we have to start looking for savings for next year anywhere we can in this year's coming up year's budget, so.
And we've already started having those discussions and planning.
Other questions? I guess the only thing I'll add is, you know, we've lived year after year with a July state budget, you know, July fifth, July eighth, July tenth, but assuming we don't get a state budget till September, we are a month into the school year. We don't know what's going to happen with federal funding, and there's a very real chance we'd have to reopen a budget and make adjustments if the state funding does not come through as we budgeted. I don't know that there's much optimism for coming in more, but hopefully it at least comes in at what we budgeted. If not, we're going to be in rough shape. So not to mention the federal uncertainty. So I hate a tax increase that high. It's been a long time since we had one in general, and then to jump in at four point three, but we have, the administration has done a good job cutting a lot, a lot more than I'd like to cut, a lot more we've cut in years, as well as pulling a sizable amount, almost six million for our fund balance. So I don't know that we have any other choice. If you pull that tax increase out, we're, you know, the deficit is sky high. So I don't like it, but I don't know that we have much of a choice, and I think it's the right decision at this point. So if there is, oh, Dr. Beckpulley, sure.
Just just to add to that, I think it's smart that we're being conservative and expecting what we're expecting or approaching this season with the, you know, caution when it comes to money coming in from the state and the federal government. There is movement on cyber charter reform. You're right to consider it zero, but just to point out that should that sort of, that should that legislation, which is designed to sort of better align cyber charter tuition expenses with, or tuition with the actual expenses, as well as increase in transparency and accountability for those, that stands to impact the district by about five million dollars. So just for a sense of scale of those kinds of efforts, that is a conversation underway. But again, I think we're smart to assume not, but just to point out the impact that some of these decisions are having.
All right. Anyone else? Seeing none, then Mr. Seven oh one, two, and three.
Dr. Shively.
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick. Dr. Beckpulley.
Yes.
Dr. White.
Yes.
Mr. Rashudi.
Yes.
Mr. Fashionato.
Yes.
Mr. Lozey.
Yes.
Mrs. Shankle.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Vistakazian.
Thank you, everyone.
And thank you, Dr. Silva and the entire administration for putting this together. This was not an easy one. All right. No new miscellaneous business. Any courtesy of the floor? Seeing none, open forum, seeing none. We're going to roll right into our two committee meetings for the night. So if there's nothing else, motion to adjourn. Dr. White, thank you. Second. Dr. Shively, all in favor? All right, we are adjourned, and we are going to begin our next committee meeting right away. Right, you're up.
All right. Good evening. Finance committee meeting for June ninth is called to order. First agenda item, public comment. Any public comment on any agenda item tonight? There'll be a second public comment at the end. No discussion items. Moving right into three point oh one dining services update.
Good evening. For those in the audience who don't know who I am, I'm Frank Burn, the business manager, and I have with me today Ashley Kelly from Dining Services, and I'd just like to say that I've been working in schools with dining services for twenty years, and she is the single most enthusiastic dining service employee I've ever met. But you already know that if you've ever met her. Next slide, please, Jamie. Okay. What we want to talk about today is, of course, we all know that we've transitioned from one FSMC, food service management company, to a new one this year. So we're running up on just completing that first year. So through this first year, you know, it's been a learning curve. We've, you know, built the relationship between our staff at Bethlehem along with the staff of Mets. There's been a lot of training, and a lot of the training has been focused on, you know, increasing our productivity, efficiency, and what we're also trying to do is work on. productivity, efficiency, and what we're also trying to do is work on the continuity between the schools. There's been instances where certain schools are doing different things from other schools, and they should all be doing the same thing. There's been a lot of talk with the changing guidelines with food, so we're working through with that along with our staff and Mets. We got less sugar, less salt, and addressing food coloring coming up, even though it sounds like we've been doing with the less sugar and less salt for quite a long time. One thing we did as soon as, actually, yeah, right as soon as Mets came on, is we did a serious look at all of our equipment. A lot of our equipment was neglected in the past, where we needed to actually replace things that were already broken or fix things that needed to be fixed. And you'll see a list of all of the things we've done this year, which is quite extensive and has helped us out a lot, both in making sure our food gets out there on time and at the right temperature, that there's the available choices, and it also makes our staff a little bit more happy when they have the equipment to be, to work with. We also did some of the small wares as well, give them, involve dining staff, all of the tools they need to do the job quickly and the right way. We also had an audit over the last couple of years that, you know, one of the things that they recommended was that we create a focus group. So we have a focus group with students, and we meet with them, I believe it's quarterly, Ashley? Quarterly, and, you know, get their input, and some of their suggestions have already been implemented. Next slide, please. This slide kind of speaks for itself. We all know we had a dip in '22, '23 that we've discussed before, and you'll see that this year, '24, '25, we'll give you the exact figures in, I believe, the next slide, but it's about a 1.8% or 1.5% increase in meals served, so we're basically the same as last year, which, when you transition as much as we have, you know, that's, I think, a good base, sets the baseline, and now we can grow from that. And Mets and our staff is committed to doing just so. So our current participation rate is 59.8%. Along with Mets, we've established that our target is going to be 64%, and that's going to take a lot of things to get to that point. 59.8% is not uncommon for other school districts. We're kind of right in there with everyone. So it's difficult to get people to take even breakfasts that are free to every student. So we're going to try to increase that by the areas that are mentioned here, and a lot of them are common sense things, but we really have to drive them home. You know, make sure that the students are involved, make sure we're providing high quality and fresh foods. Make sure we get new items in, and also, we're going to conduct tastings with the students so that it's not just a new item on the list. It's something that some of the students will actually get the taste beforehand if they so desire. In talking with Mets, they would like to get, are planning on collaborating with our health and wellness with both the athletics and also through health classes, so. Of course, we're going to keep, try to get à la carte in all the schools, but à la carte isn't necessarily the most healthy of foods, but yes, what do you have?
Just a quick question. So participation rate, what is that based on? Is it based on a certain amount?
That is, that is an average of the number of students who actually take a meal and the total population of the district. There's no other factoring in there for, you know, any kind of free or payment or anything like, that's the overall.
I was just trying to figure out how that worked with, like, sorry, I was trying to figure out how that worked with, like, my kids, for example, buy two or three days a week sometimes, next week they buy five days, following week they buy one. So it's, like...
It is the actual reporting that we do for the state on how many meals we serve. So yes, if they buy two or three times a week, you know, that...
It's the average. So we did meal counts by the end of the school year versus enrollment, and it was just kind of a quick calculation.
Okay.
I have some, I have a couple of questions as well.
Wait a minute, let me go to the next slide. It's all about questions.
Okay.
I'm kidding, go.
You want to get to the next slide?
No, the next one is just, do you have any questions?
There you go, I beat, we beat into it, yeah.
You knew what was coming next.
All right, so I'm really curious to know what the questions were asked of the students, just in terms of food quality, amount of food, only because, you know, if you factor in a survey results by age, we might find that older kids might need more quantity, et cetera. Just because their growing bodies need that. I'm glad that you're connecting with the wellness programs. I mean, this kind of collective impact of knowledge and lifestyle change is really, really forward-thinking, and I definitely appreciate that. And then one note is, it's great that you have the athletic programs. Would you consider, at least at the secondary school level, of including the arts, music theater, choral programs that often stay late at schools and also, you know, have a significant need for food? They typically run out and do some Dunkin' Donuts tragic things, or other drive-through bags of soaked grease guilt, but it would be really, really helpful for these students to also know that they are, like athletes, really needing to nurse their bodies for these long sustained performances.
So we actually do participate in the after-school snack program, and that's something that, since I've started, we've able to grow and communicate. I think a lot of people didn't know that it was available, but we actually have increased that program. So we are communicating that across the school. So it's basically like a green and a fruit for anybody who's participating in an after-school snack.
And that's at secondary as well as elementary?
Yes.
Ah, now, is there, that's good to know, thank you. And are the coaches and directors also encouraging the participation on that level?
Directly Fred Harris and Nate Sander. The athletic directors over at Freedom and Liberty, we are really working our way down to the middle schools as well, but we are definitely, you know, wrestling, they do request specific things, and we are able to get them, you know, as far as their nutritionals. I'm not the nutritional person, but that's, if you have any nutritional questions, we can approach you.
With the permission of Dr. Silva, could I ask that at the same level of contact in implementation of communication, you add the directors of the fine arts departments in both high schools, and that does filter down into the middle schools, if that's okay, just for a consideration?
Anything else?
Okay. Any other questions?
We're going to move on to CEP briefly, because this was asked about in a meeting or two ago. These first two slides I have here are the same two slides I used last year when we presented, basically detailing the difference between a traditional and a CEP. Wait a minute, I got it.
Community eligibility provision.
Thank you. I blanked out there for a second. I blanked up at a second, I'm sorry. Yeah. So a lot of the difference is, is that basically CEP, community eligibility.
Provision.
Provision. Everybody eats for free. But we've, in the next couple of slides, will show you why we're at where we're at and why we are not CEP currently, okay? This is a good little brief, one that was, of course, provided before, and there's also problems that we'll be doing, we'll be explaining later on, in the possibility of the direct certification not being available to us. So this right here is the profile of our district. So you can see where some of our schools land up. We have a couple of schools that are actually at 100%, where they would, you know, individually, they would be CEP all the way, if we went that way. But as you can see, overall, we're a little bit all over the place.
Frank, maybe you could walk through an example of what, like, a calypso would mean in terms of CEP eligible or not?
So if the, you want me to go into the ISP calculation, Harry? No.
Maybe I'll summarize it for you. So looking at calypso, that means that 82% of the population would get reimbursed for us at 100% of the free rate. The remaining 18% would get paid out to the district at a smaller percentage. So when you calculate whether the school is eligible, you want it to be at 100%. Anything less than that means that the district is going to kick in the remaining amount. Looking at William Penn, 98% of the food will be reimbursed at 100%, the remaining 2% will be reimbursed at a reduced amount. So if you go to the next slide, we could show you where some of those numbers come into play.
The ISP multiplier is created for us. It's not something we do, but it's part of the regulations. And once they calculate that, then they have to multiply it by 1.6. I have no idea why they picked 1.6. That's just the number they picked. Yes, that's what we were told to multiply it by, and that's how we get to these figures here. And obviously, as Harry said, 100% would be great, but overall, as a district, this is where we stand as of now. The next slide gives you a good example of what this means. And as Harry, oh, one of my lines is missing. So if you look at an ISP of 62.5, times it by the 1.5, that's where you get your 100%. So in other words, we'd get 100% free and 0% taxpayer, local taxpayer funding. But as you look down, say 40, if your ISP is 40, based on that 1.6, you'd get 64% would be free, but then the 36, in other words, you'd only get reimbursed 44 cents for that meal, and the district would have to pick up the rest. That's simply all those numbers mean. How much the district ends up paying, how much is free that paid for by the...
And I think what's also important to point out here is that if we do go CEP, we would lose the 285 and 265 cash revenue for students that they do pay. There are three different reimbursement rates. We have the 445 for paid, 405 for reduced, and then 44 cents for paid students. So we would miss that for the paid students, we would miss that 285 or 265 reimbursement. So that's kind of why we're not meeting so much in the middle as we would like.
And Ashley's statement leads us to the next one. We did a sort of a projection. We took the CEP calculator and did it to our actual pairs claim, so that's in Lehman's terms, it's how many kids ate this year, and we calculated what our loss would have been in '24, '25, had we gone CEP. So as you can see, we're right at that border. We're not quite there yet as we've presented, you know, before, but for this time, we wanted to show you how much of a difference it is. Yes?
So just to gain clarity, the losses that we see are for all 20, or not even 20 schools, all schools that provide lunch or feeding program.
Correct.
Would these figures look different? Because three slides ago, we saw how differently different schools,
Sure.
how that looks, and if that would look differently. So if this is the overall loss, what does that loss look like in comparison to what our losses are in general?
So we've done this multiple ways. This is the district overall option. If you go back to the slide with the buildings, some of the buildings do qualify, but we intentionally don't want to split them out. So for example, you can say William Penn, Donegan, and Town Hill, that 100%, let's make them CEP. That means those students will be eligible at 100%. Other elementary students wouldn't. If we break it out into buckets, so whether it be all elementary, or all middle, or all high, every one of those categories still continues to be at a loss. As of last year and this year, keep your fingers crossed, we're making a little bit of a profit, not a big profit, but we're also not losing money. So because we're not losing money, we don't want to go in that direction and start. Yeah, so we're now in a decent position, but our concern, and we did it multiple ways, was not splitting out the schools. So if we wanted to split out the middle schools, for example, we could say Northeast and Brockle, we're going to make them CEP and the other ones pay, but we didn't think that was really equitable or fair.
Okay, I hear you on that. What, I hear you on that, but what is the difference, like, when we look at schools that are Title I versus non-Title I that receive more of something or less of something in that same regard? Like, why would this be different?
It would actually impact the Title I allocations, but based on our conversations from prior years, there was no real appetite to split them up. If there is, and we feel that that's the direction we want to go in, we could definitely take advantage of the schools with 100% or close to, and make sure that the program is viable and sustainable, quite frankly. There's a couple of slides we have on future uncertainty that also give us thanks. So maybe if we go through those slides, we can then have the broader discussion.
Next slide, please. As Harry said, we're looking at a few things that are going to or may not happen in the future, and some of them are quite large. USDA cutting a billion dollars, that's kind of important. You know, some of the details we have on that include, let me just pull up the exact figure here. I believe it is 664,000, 664,000,000. Would that directly improve, uh... Sorry, million, 660 million that is assigned to helping schools purchase local, fresh food for school meals. And that's a really good thing, that there may be cutting, because where do you get your food if it's not local, it's not fresh, or whatever? That means more processed food and commercially produced food that we wouldn't have. So that's one of the parts of the billion. Of course, there's increased tariffs that are going through. We're not really sure how that's going to impact any future equipment we're going to need for dining services. Doing a little bit of research, I found that most of our equipment is manufactured or assembled in the US, but we still get most of our parts and the components from other countries. This one hit the news last week, where our governor has filed a lawsuit against the US Department of Agriculture for $13 million. Of course, that may or may not have an impact on us immediately, and then there's been proposed changes to direct certification, and this really upsets Ashley. Ashley, would you like to speak on that?
So students who are considered directly certified are eligible for free or reduced-priced meals without having to complete an application. Those are SNAP, TAN, Medicaid, if you're in those income guidelines. Now, the new proposed budget is making children's access to that direct certification less available, for lack of a better word. So right now, Bethel Mary's School District has, say, for example, don't quote me on the exact numbers, 60% directly certified students. That number is looking like it's going to trend down, which means that we are going to need to collect free and reduced applications for those students who would not be considered directly certified, which in turn trickles down to more lunch debt, because no matter what we do, I could use five full-time people to get parents to fill out applications. It's just, it's not a perfect process, and it's a statewide issue. So there are definite trickle-down effects to this direct certification change. Another issue that that might have is currently for you to, a district to be considered CEP is 25% of your students directly certified. They're proposing that go up to 60%. So these are all things that... So these are all things that, as we calculate these numbers to go C E P, I think, you know, we need to keep in the back of our mind that the future is very uncertain, you know?
Yeah, and and we're keeping an eye on not only the funding piece, but the challenges of making sure that we get the right forms, right applications, just to be able to serve those needs. So given all the uncertainty, given the limited amount of detail that's out there, you know, these are just headlines. But there's no real direction on what that one billion will affect, which programs are cut, so on and so forth. So we take them very seriously. At the same time, we're we're kind of anxiously waiting what's the detail, because that can impact our summer food program, that can impact our after-school programs. Majority of these are federally funded. Um, so in light of all this uncertainty, we're we're still going to recommend not to participate in C E P unless, of course, the district feels that we want to split some of these schools up and say these schools do qualify and these don't. Uh, I just think it could create some some challenges for us.
And uh, the next slide, please. To end off on um, a good note. Um, this is a list of all of our summer food service program sites this summer, which is close to the most we've ever had, I believe. Or the most we've ever had in locations. Um, and a lot of this is thanks to the hard work of Ashley as well. So the next slide is just if you have any other questions or or comments? Okay, yes.
Just for clarification, because I'm not totally sure how the certification process works, what falls to the district, what falls to parents to be able to qualify for these things. But given some of the uncertainty, I I'm just trying to figure out how to how to understand what makes more people's life easier and fewer people's life harder. For example, if we have some schools that a hundred percent qualify, if if we as a district were to do take care of those schools through C E P program, does that then take some of that application burden, risk of food debt off of parents? And we've just settled that we've actually made the situation easier and more streamlined in some of those buildings. I I don't know enough about the behind-the-curtain stuff, about what falls to parents and what forms have to be filled out and all of that.
It would a hundred percent make everybody's life easier from the parent to Ashley to us. Because they would they would essentially say, there's no more applications, you're direct certified, you're good to go, a hundred percent of the students are eligible for free breakfast and free lunch. If you go back a couple of slides, Jamie, there's a big graphic with the S and P in the middle. If you're not direct certified, one more, Jamie. Uh, one more. That's one. So if you're not direct certified, which means through the SNAP program, through medical assistance or all those, then you're going to need some kind of paper application to come through Ashley's office. That means we send out applications at the beginning of the year, and once you qualify, it's only good for one year. You're going to continue to put the burden back on the parents and continue to put the burden back on us to collect those forms. That direct cert piece is what's really changing. So in in a way, it's like, okay, more people are eligible because we're now reducing it down to twenty-five percent. But less people are direct certified, so now you have the burden to go out there and and find those people. That's what causes the administrative burden on Ashley. So if we had more staffing, more resources, we can obviously go and collect more and and ease the burden on families. But it becomes very challenging when they're not certified directly. Hope that makes sense.
And so that direct, the certain percentage of kids and families directly certifying would be true whether we do C E P or we don't?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Yeah, so I think what I'm hearing that any savings that we would see from going that route would almost be lost by having to get the administrative management to like basically hire other people to make sure that, because you can't expect that same level of service with what we have now. So we would have to hire more people. So you'd almost like lose the money that you saved. Am I am I following you?
I'm not sure I'm following the money saved piece.
So like, if the four elementary schools that are eligible for, you know, they're at a hundred percent, I S P, C E P, one, two, three, whatever, whatever the acronym is, but the four elementary schools that are eligible, all right, then they're good. But to get eligibility for the schools that would not be eligible, you would need extra assistance to actually manage that process for the other kids. And therefore, you would probably need to hire somebody to do that.
Correct.
Okay, that's very.
Now, if this is something that we achieve, you know, we we started off the slides with, we we aim to grow the program. If we are successful in growing the program, then by default, we will be more eligible for C E P. So what we need is more more students to start participating, whether they're paid or not. If you start participating in a program and the program continues to grow, then we will be more likely to get into C E P. Couple of years back, when we looked at this, we were trending up. Well, since then, we started trending back down, which is why we have the big focus on growth. If we can grow the program, if we increase the quality, if we increase the partnership, that'll all lead us towards the path of success. Being a CFO, I I will say that seven hundred thousand is above my tolerance limit, despite um, all the benefits that come with that. If we get that to a more manageable number, we can find a way to make it work.
And I think there is also something to note, too, that you would think that going C E P, everybody free, would drastically increase the meal served. Um, we are trending right about the numbers where we did when we were full free during COVID. So, you know, it 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 would be great to say if we went C E P, we would sell twenty-five thousand more meals every year. But unfortunately, the numbers are not showing that that's what would happen.
Dr. White?
Um, I want to go back to a comment that you had said earlier about tariffs. It will it will impact produce as well. And so I'm wondering if um, with the cost of food, which will inevitably increase with the inflation and all the other things that are variable. Um, do you have a contingency plan for those throughout the year? Could were there costs of food increases this last year that impacted the the end of your report for budget?
We we do have access to um, and I'm forgetting the name, commodities, thank you, Ashley. Um, where we we've taken greater advantage of that this year than we have in, say, the last couple of years. So we're we're taking uh, we're getting free food that we can use towards our 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 uh meals that will offset things we would have purchased otherwise. You know, other other than that, of course, we are looking at the cost of everything. And uh, we're trying to keep the menus and everything together so that the cost is beneficial in what we get reimbursed for the meals. But yes, it's it it's something that's definitely on the radar.
Well, a- actually, it's kudos to Mets because they've been a great partner. And in this, in the short period that we've been with them, they've actually found lots of opportunities for more efficiency and savings. Even recently, we had an eat-for, I'm going to screw this up, actually, but I think it was a food warmer lines, and rather than going out new, we actually went to auction and were able to secure something for a fraction of the cost. So innovative ways to get us to items we need without compromising quality. And in that case, I believe it was a dent on the on the warmer that uh, you know, somebody had returned, and we're okay with the dent as long as it works.
Right.
So really, kudos to them. They they've been a fantastic partner in the past year.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. We'll move into uh, number four, agenda items for June sixteenth, twenty twenty-five regular board meeting. Four point oh one is the Plan Kais, Plan Con K, Submittal of General Obligation Bonds Series A, twenty twenty-five. That's the refinancing of the Series A, twenty fifteen, general obligation bonds. Just a formality here.
Uh, it it's more of a formality, but we're we're going to submit for reimbursement, um, because we refinance this as the form that we would typically submit, and then hopefully we'll get that approved by the August meeting.
Any questions on that? Four point oh two is the Northampton Ca- Community College Articles of Agreement. This is so we can make payments on a monthly basis rather than quarterly. What was it before?
Yeah, it it helps manage cash flow, so rather than splitting up the payments at the end of the semester, we'd make continuous payments uh based on our agreed amount.
We did that last year. Any questions on this? All right, four point oh three is payment of the bills prior to the August board meeting. Uh, it's just, since we don't meet in July, bills have to be paid, right?
Hence the big agendas.
Four point oh four, payment of invoices and budgets transfers to close out the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five fiscal year. Standard item. Four point oh five is the Capital Reserve Commitment of Fund Balance.
So should there be a surplus at the end of the year, which we don't really anticipate a surplus this year, uh, we would bring that back to the board uh with audited financials and then designated capital as we've done in the past.
Any questions? All right, moving on to four point oh six, student accident insurance.
Uh, student accident renewal, uh, same insurance coverage, same quality, same price as last year, no real changes, just an annual formality to prove.
Four point oh seven is the property liability vehicle and workers' comp insurance coverage.
Yeah, we we've gone out to bid on on these items as well. It's an annual item. Uh, you can see where some of the costs have increased. Uh, overall, it's an eight percent increase from where we were last year, uh, which is under the ten percent benchmarks, so we're doing fairly well on this area.
Any questions on that? I think everybody's insurance going up, so. Uh, four point oh eight, donations for scholarship.
Um, this is a compliance item. We received about eighty thousand dollars for a scholarship, forty thousand for liberty, forty thousand for freedom, uh, annual item.
Four point oh nine, the medical and dental contracts. Annual item here.
Yeah, uh, we do have two new doctors, Dr. Nate um, and Nancy, more like the the items in B. They've agreed to take on a ten dollar per physical uh through Lehigh Valley, so that's a new contract. Uh, otherwise, it's the same.
Any questions on that?
Uh, I just want to understand, make sure I understand this through for our wellness committee. Um, under, this is the uh, services here brought to the school through a van? For the for the medic van, is that what this is? Or is that this is completely different?
No. So the these, these doctors and and dentists will go to the buildings uh, and and see the students at at the individual buildings at the cost that's on there.
Not the dental van.
Not the dental van, okay, that that's fine. Um, I just wanted to be sure that we were covering our services in the delivery. Thank you.
Any other questions? Four point one zero, Colonial Intermediate Unit Twenty, Contract for Service Agreements. Any questions on those? All right, four point one one, A B A Support Services LLC Agreement. And then four point one two is the A B A Support Services LLC Pre-K Accounts Agreement.
Largely renewals.
Sorry?
Largely renewals.
Yeah. Four point one three is the uh, Resonance Education Agreement. Is the S E L coaching package.
Same.
Same as last year. And then we have uh, the Franklin Covey Leader Me, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I have a question, but actually applies to both four point one three and four point one four. And with both of those agreements, how many, I know that this is for this, each or for this coming school year, but like, how many years are we like, looking to be part of either of these programs?
We still have a a United Way-funded grant that goes out in at least three or four more years. So we're uh, we'll probably be back with something very similar again next year.
Okay, thank you.
Close to twenty thirty-two, so we'll be back for a number of years from now.
Twenty thirty-two, okay.
That's if Mr. Douglas makes good on his ping.
Any questions on four point one three or point four point one four? Then we go to four point one five, International Institution of Restorative Practices Agreement. The renewal again.
Renewal.
Any questions on that? Four point one six, St. Luke's University Health Network School-to-Work Program.
This is actually a new program um, that's designated for ESOL students um, to get a career in healthcare, so it's it's like career tech head program. Um, that'll be starting this year, and we're going to pilot that into twenty thirty.
Yes, Mr. Lozey.
Okay, that, how did we come about that? That's great. Like, who brokered that? That's really good.
Claire Hogan, but I don't know the background behind that.
We've actually been working on an extension from the school.
I I just, I just want to share, I have a young man that I work with very closely, who's already a part of that school to work program and has done the program. He was assisting in an operating room and that that changed his life. Eighteen-year-old just graduated from Liberty High School um, and has just applied to the nursing program at uh, NACAC. I share this because this is a young man who lost his father to violence, um, who is being raised by a single mother who has a brother who had a child in high school. So all of the markers of this kid probably is not going to be successful, and he's going into a nursing program because of the school-to-work program. And so to see that we're now moving this into helping another group of kids that that, you know, with language barrier, like, that's really good. So I I'm, no, I'm taking time, I just want to say that that's really good.
And the board is always invited to the May presentations that the school to work uh, kids do. It's always inspirational.
Any other questions, comments on four point one six? None. Four point one seven, United Way Community School Partnerships Memorandum of Understanding.
These are our annual agreements.
Yes, Mr. Lozey.
I see Freemansburg is in there. That's good.
They're coming on.
Thank the Lord.
All right, then we go to four point one eight, four point one eight. Let's do four point one nine, four point two zero. Those are all software and projector replacements. Any questions on those three? Then we go to four point two one through four point two five, it looks like here, for renewal of software programs.
All in use now.
Um, any any questions on those? And then we go to the two at the end here, four point two six, four point two seven. Sir, is Casey want to go over those, the grant applications with federal?
You'll notice that the amounts are left blank because we still don't know our allocation. Um, in order to comply with our board policies and and apply by July, we would have to put this on our agenda. Um, so we did put it on the agenda. Historically, we've gotten those amounts way in advance at this meeting. Uh, as of this morning, we still didn't have them. Hopefully, we'll have them by the sixteenth, and we can approve the amounts that are in place. Uh, but this leads to some of the uncertainty that we have going into the budget.
Can we approve them without the amounts at the sixteenth? If we don't have it, just fill them in later, or?
That's a good question, because we're technically approving the application, not the amount of the allocation. Uh, so we would probably pull the dollar amounts out and then come back after the fact and get, and let you know what the amounts are. Um, but we have to approve the app of application applying for these grants, um, not necessarily the allocation that comes from the state.
Or we could add language that says, as per the eventual allocation.
Yeah.
Historically, I think what Dr. Silva's suggesting, I think it needs to be on record in case we have to look back at our voting record. We really need to be clear and include that language.
Yeah.
Because the this is so, the variables are just so wonky.
Yeah, I mean, yes.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions on four point two six or four point two seven? All right, seeing none, we'll go to courtesy of the floor, public comment for any item. Mr. Antalics.
Steven Antalics, seventy-seven Rich. I S P, I was just told stands for Identified Student Percentage. Now, in the slide showing the various schools and the percent, does the percent indicate the number of children of that school getting financial assistance for the meals? What's that percent indicate? I'm sorry.
The overall percentage in the school, not the number of students. So if it's a hundred percent, that means every student in that building is eligible, not not that.
I'm having trouble understanding, but uh, um, my hearing aids aren't working that well, but then the the reason I bring this up is I noticed that Hanover is twenty-seven. And Brockle and Fountain Hill are a hu- one hundred percent. And they represent high area wealth and low area wealth. So I'm trying to get the correlation of what that percent of I S P in that slide really means. In other words, those two schools are getting more financial assistance for the student meals than Hanover. Am I right in assuming that? Am I right in assuming that?
Yes.
Yeah, that 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 correlation keeps coming up and up and up and everywhere look at it. And I just wonder how the school district is correlating this date data from various areas, whether it be pre-k, reading, math, or free lunches to help those kids because um the numbers are really screaming out.
Thank you, Mr. Antalik. Any other, anyone else for courtesy of the floor? Open forum, anyone? Two minute reset for HR.
Thank you, Mr. Ashudi.
All right, we're gonna get started with our Human Resources Committee meeting, starting with courtesy of the floor. Anybody wishing to speak on agenda items only? Seeing none, then we will begin with our first discussion item, two point oh one, which is Board Policy seven oh six is our second reading. Dr. Burris, any changes you want to discuss from last time?
No, there I have not received any changes. I don't believe Harry has either.
All right.
The only two items that are changes are highlighted in red and thousand dollar limits.
Perfect. There you go. All right, um, so if there's no objections, you'll see that on the agenda next week. That's item four point oh one for agenda items. So if everybody's good, that'll be on the agenda for next Monday night. Uh, we have a couple information items and the first, uh, Mr. Repture is our annual school safety and security report.
Good evening.
Can you hear me?
Okay.
There we go. So this is uh just the annual report that I I have to do and submit um by June thirtieth every year, so we can just go through it slide by slide. So these are just some of the conferences that were attended. Uh, the first one was a testify before the PA House Education Committee on School Safety. That was uh October tenth at the Capitol. That was a really cool experience. Um, some other trainings, Legal Guide to ICE Enforcement in Schools, that was virtual. Uh, US Secret Service Preventing Mass Attacks in Our Community, that was also virtual. Go ahead. Slide. Uh, third annual PSS Penn SSI Safety Summit, which was in Mechanicsburg. Uh, the US Secret Service First Baptist Church of Sutherland Springs After Action Report, that was another mass casualty event. Um, Tech Two Recertification Training, which was just last week. Slide. These are just some of the meetings that I attend consistently. Uh, Colonial Intermediate Unit Emergency Preparedness, that's quarterly. Uh, our administrators report to K twelve principals, that is done virtually on a form. Uh, elementary school safety meetings monthly. Uh, school resource officer meetings quarterly and meetings with branches of the first responders responsible for serving BASD. Uh, Act fifty five trainings this year, uh, to be compliant with Act fifty five of twenty twenty two, which requires all school safety and school all school school employees to receive three hours of safety training per year. Two hours can be virtual. This year's topics were suicide and bullying awareness and situational awareness. And this year's in-person was one hour on threat assessment and recognizing behaviors of concern. There were thirty separate of the in-person trainings that I conducted that I have actually one more on the eleventh. We had one today and one more to coming up. Go ahead. So another big project for this year is a coordinated a physical security and site assessments for Freedom High School, Liberty High School, East Hills Middle School, Nitsman Middle School, Northeast Middle School, Thomas Jefferson Elementary, William Penn Elementary. All the assessments were conducted by the Center for Safe Schools. So that was a big project for for this year. Um, they finished their reports, they provided them back to the district. There are recommendations um in those reports that can be looked at and it goes over the overall physical security of each individual building, right? That combined with behavioral health and climate surveys. When those are both tied together, that's a full risk and vulnerability assessment. And some of these schools have already had the behavioral health and climate assessment, so we're just trying to get them all up to speed. Okay. Uh, provided therapeutic behavior management, TBM training to district employees. We did si- six separate trainings I was involved with this year. Uh, I monitor all our emergency drills to ensure compliance with the law and monitor our beacon go guardian self-harm notifications. All right, coordinated virtual C-Tag training for BASD Threat Assessment Team members as required by law. Updated training on Navigate Prepared and Raptor Visitor Management System. Uh, serve as a district lead for all of our threat assessment teams. Uh, another project, we increased our digital radios by thirty seven in our our schools. Um, so the breakdown, I think Liberty got eight, Freedom got seven, each elementary got one new radio. And then the uh whatever was left was divided up equally to the middle schools. Uh, coordinated building tours for BASD schools as required by law. Those usually taking place, obviously over the summer when no kids are in the building. And um purchased eighty-eight Triton Ultra sensors for all BASD secondary buildings. All right, Safe to Say, serve as the BA SD District Lead for Safe to Say Handle with Care. Monitor the BASD Safe to Say P three anonymous tip line. Receiving forward tips handled with care notification to the appropriate schools, provided disposition and close out all cases in P three as required. So here's our data for this year. Total tips received were two oh six. Um, you can see the breakdown of the days of the week when those tips are received. Tuesday was the highest this year and Monday was right close behind. So those were the breakdown of the dates that the tips came in. The tip event category percentages. So the, I'm gonna give this with a caveat. Aside from the handle with care, which is submitted by our law enforcement partners. Right? All the other tip categories, when the tipster calls in or enters their tip on the web, they select the event category. Right? So and we can't change that on the backend. So you, for the most part, they're they're pretty accurate, but sometimes you get ones that aren't quite right, like I, just an example, I got a tip recently. The the event was social isolation and withdraw, but the tip was wondering if a student actually lived within the district and should be going to school in the district. So I mean, that's really um the far end of the paradigm. For the most part, they're they're pretty close to on or in the general um category like you know, su- some are suicidal ideation, some are cutting self-harm. Those are pretty much all in the right categories. Uh, threats against school or against person, that threat may be Jimmy's gonna beat up Sally, right? That doesn't necessarily mean it's something of galactic proportions. But the percentages of our tips that came in this year, the highest is once again handle with care at thirty-two percent of all of our tips. All right, followed by threat against school at sixteen percent, bullying and cyberbullying at seven, cutting and self-harm at six, suicidal ideation at five, and threat against person at three percent. The remaining categories made up the other thirty-one percent of the tips. That's like the tip allocation. Obviously, the main amount of these are gonna be middle school and high school because kids don't get trained on Safe to Say until they're in middle school. Most, if not almost all of the tips that come in related to elementary schools are of the handle with care variety. But as you can see, the percentage breakdown, I think school had fifty-six percent of the tips this year, middle school thirty, and then elementary school with fourteen percent. All right, Beth Mary School District is committed to providing safe and secure learning environment for students and staff. This procedure establishes a district-wide threat assessment program to provide for timely and methodical school-based threat assessment and management in accordance with Public School Code nineteen forty-nine, Article thirteen E, Threat Assessment, Act eighteen of twenty nineteen. The model chosen by the Beth Mary Stool School District is the Comprehensive School Threat Assessment Guidelines or C-Tag. The Beth Mary School District utilizes Navigate three sixty Behavioral Health, I'm sorry, Behavioral Threat Assessment Platform to respond to any and all reported school threats. All of BASD's twenty-three threat assessment teams receives C-Tag training regarding how to utilize the C-Tag and the digital platform. Slide. This year we had a total of two hundred and fourteen total threat assessment cases. All right, there are the top nine schools. All right. And the amount of cases that they had in the top nine schools. Go ahead. Our threat resolutions. So out of our threats, out of our threat assessment case, those that have been resolved, you can see at the very bottom, thirty-seven of those cases are still open and unclassified. All right, so that could mean they're still investigating or they were still investigating at the time of this report. But four were the very serious variety. Seventeen were serious. Hundred and twenty-four were transient, which is what we would expect and hope for, and thirty-two were not a threat at all. Okay, slide. The threats reported from, so these are the percentage breakdown of the threats reported from. Fifty-four percent were reported by a teacher, so the teacher observed the threatening behavior, made the report to a member of the team and the team took care of the report. Fifteen percent came from an administrator, eighteen percent from another student, six percent from a school psychologist or counselor, four percent from a parent, and three percent from others. So other could be law enforcement or a a we- a virtual tip or something like that. Go ahead. So some future goals, um, all right, I already did my therapeutic Tac Two Recertification Trainer, but I'll have to do it again next year. All right, uh, assistant providing Tac Two and TBM training to BASD staff is required. Coordinate continued C-Tag training on the Navigate three sixty digital platform. Continue to support Navigate Prepared Training for all BASD schools and staff. Continue the biannual tours, uh, coordinate future Act fifty-five training related. I'm training to all BASD staff on PD-approved topics. Uh, continue review BASD policies related to safety. Um, so the 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 this next one is a real big one that I I I couldn't have done without uh Marie's staff and Mark Stein's staff was actually the implementation of the Triton Ultra Sensors uh in into our secondary schools. Um, because number one, I can't hammer a nail in the wood and number two, I'm really bad with computers, so.
What do those sensors do, Mr. Rich?
So the sensors and the sensors do a lot of different things. One of the primary functions is a vape detecting or for THC and or vape. That is not the primary reason I bought that. Although in middle school, I kind of like that function. But what it also does gunshot detection, loitering detection, vandalism detection, keyword search detection. So if somebody in there yells help or police, the alarm could go off, so you can program these things. So it's more, while while the, obviously the vaping is a concern within the district, what we don't want is every time this thing goes off for a vape sensor, especially at the high school level, to have everybody running and checking it. Because you, all you'll get is a bunch of kids throwing vapes down a toilet and then you'll get broken toilets. These sensors are all tied to a camera on the exterior of these lavatories. If you get a hit for a vape or a THC, you can effectively monitor that and see who comes out of that bathroom and you could smartly approach those students at a later time, whereas you're not gonna risk anything being damaged or property. I'm more concerned with the vaping if we can prevent it and the response preventing it at the middle school level, right, where the kids are younger. Right? There I would expect maybe a little bit more active involvement in enforcement there because we want to do that in a preventative mode. We want to try to cut it off before they get to high school and they're already putting this crap in their lungs, this this alcohol and getting popcorn lung at an earlier age, which we don't want. These are completely, these vapes are terrible for you. Absolutely horrible. But the bigger reason that I was impressed by these sensors, number one, I I I met the two owners uh and they're young, like in their twenties young. Uh, they're Pennsylvania-based. Um, I met him at a uh National Safety Conference in Florida a couple of years ago. Um, and I did some research into their product and some other well, uh, more nationally known products such as Halo. Uh, and the bottom line is the Halo machines don't do what these machines can do. And um I developed a bit of a relationship with with the two the two owners and um they they weren't salespeople, right? They they were young kids. Um, and they they had a real belief in their product and they they wanted to um make an impact on safety within the building, so that's um that was one of the big projects for this year. So that last line there, complete six physical site assessments for next year, it's actually gonna be eight. So we're gonna do eight more physical site assessments next year. Uh, we'll finish out our secondary with Brockle and then there's a handful of elementaries that will work our way through uh next year. And then we'll have, that's thirteen down, so we'll only have a few more to do. Uh, obviously Fountain Hill, we'll wait till we have a new building to do that, um, which is required by law anyway. Um, once the building is brand new, so that that's where we're at for this year. So any questions?
All right, question, Dr. White?
Of course I have questions, just a couple. I actually, thank you for putting these
Yep.
sharing this with us ahead of time. Um, on the uh the Tritons, uh, there's a if I read the product right, there's a trigger so that if it catches a vape, you said there's a camera that shows you who it is.
So what what, no, not specifically, so. the vape, say your bathroom is right here. There's, there's a camera outside of the ba- we obviously can't have cameras in the bathrooms. But there's cameras outside that that vape detector will be tied to. So you would be able to, if you get a hit, you could go up to the Genetech system, log on to that camera and actually see who comes out of that bathroom. So it has to be able to know who's in the bathroom and for how long they're in the bathroom.
Okay. So the turnaround time for an alert to activating a visual is enough time to see them before they scurry out a camera range?
So it doesn't have to be immediate because you can go back in time on our cameras, right? So if you get the, say you get the alert at one oh two and you can't get to a camera until one ten, you can go back to that time when the alert went off and just watch that, that footage.
Thank you. Um, I, in one of the product descriptions, I also read um, a deterrent for loitering.
Yes.
And so is that, I mean, is the same system where you're not going to get a trigger of, of something except for maybe uh, this kid isn't in class? Can you use the cameras to, to, to see if they're hanging out in bathrooms? Not really doing anything nefarious, but.
What, what, what the machine doesn't? I don't know how it does it, but it does it. It's all black magic to me. But what it does is it is able to count when bodies go into the bathroom.
Okay.
And there are certain color. So and I, I think it goes green, orange, red. So if they've been in there for, they just pop in, they're now a green body in there. Right? It's, it looks like one of those little pedestrian guys on the side, right? On the, you know, the don't walk sign, one of the old school ones.
Okay.
It, it's really neat. And then if they've been in there for X amount of time, that green turns to orange. And then if they've been in there for X amount of time, that orange turns to red. Right? So you can effectively tell how many people are in your bathroom and for how long. Now you won't know specifically because obviously we don't have cameras in the bathrooms, but you, you'd be able to monitor if you have ten people in your bathroom, that's probably, right? So.
Okay, um, going on to a different question. I very much appreciate the, the numbers about the threat assessment cases and the safe to say reporting. I'm curious about how they compare year to year. Um, only to see if these types of reports shift at all in any type of, I mean, I'm really glad for the weekly report. It says, woo, Tuesdays are rough days. Guess what? Those are the news cycle days too. So if, you know, when Tuesdays is when everything hits the fan proverbially. Um, so I'm just, I'm just really curious just about data that helps inform us about cycles or trends. So, and it's hard to take a snapshot of the, the climate just on a year to year. If I, it's just a curiosity thing. I, I'm not expecting an answer, but it, it begs me to wonder how are we doing in the longer term?
I, I think if, if I remember correctly, last year with safe to ta- I, I think we were at like two sixty five was our number last year. So we're down from that this year. A lot of things can go into numbers increasing and decreasing. Um, last year, at least I think it was last year. It's been a long year. Um, there was a whole social media trend that started about a fake in school shooter violence thing.
Yes.
That had nothing to do with anything in Pennsylvania, yet every school in Pennsylvania was reporting. So we had a boatload of numbers increased over a short period of time about these rumors that were nothing, there was nothing factual in them.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, you can see, you can see spikes like that or, or not. The, the ones I'm most concerned about, quite truth, are the suicidal ideations and the cutting and self harms. Cause those, those are usually peer reported. And, and you can kind of tell by how the reports come in and maybe the students don't usually self identify. But you can tell like, hey, my friend is, I'm concerned about my friend. So those are the ones that um, are, are, are the most valuable along with the handle with cares. Cause you know that kid was involved in some sort of trauma leading up to that report being filed. The, like I said, the, the, the threat against person, the threat against school. A lot of times it's nothing more than I heard Jimmy was going to beat up Joey on Tuesday and, and you know, you respond to them. The buildings look into it and nine times out of ten, they already are aware of this conflict um, is taking place and they're attempting to resolve it. And a lot of this reporting comes after the fact.
No, Mr. Retcher, I, I, I agree with all of that. My, my curiosity stems from reading mental health reports from P S B A in terms of needing more funding to support student and um, and schoolwide mental health programs. The data in the, in those self harm and suicidal ideation things can give us a bigger snapshot picture of how our kids are doing. And I know that the safe to say reports are not a hundred percent accurate.
Right.
But it's a way of finding the temperature. It's a way of, and I mean, especially the, the handle with care.
Yes.
And so I'm glad that we have these tools. I'm glad that we have these reports. I'm trying to see the, the total outcome in how we assess how our kids are doing, not how we are doing. Well, it's not so much the threat assessment. It's, it's more of, I, I just feel us, we're doing this reactive stuff. Okay? We're, we're reacting to the mental health crises and can we possibly doing more proactively things? That's all I'm saying. We don't have answers.
Well, and I'm not your person to ask about this. You, you really want to talk with Tracy Herner about.
Of course.
That's, I mean, that is her wheelhouse. Um, when it comes to um, the suicide screeners uh, with all of that mental health stuff, that, that's, I mean, that is her wheelhouse. That is her, one of her main books of knowledge. Um, she could provide you with a lot more valid data than, because I, uh, most of the stuff I do on this side of the aisle, where like the threat assessment and, and the safe to say is reactive.
Yes.
Like the preventative stuff is some of the hardware and some of the, you know, uh, the behavioral health climate assessments. The um, physical site assessments. That's the proactive stuff from my end.
Right.
So I, I would speak with her about those.
Well, uh, we, we will. Um, I think it's the connecting the dots. It's the connecting the dots of um, Tracy's work and her team and the fact that the only coaches that we're keeping are the S E L coaching in the classroom to, so these are all preventative measures. And realizing that the impact of that work can have results on these final reactive numbers, right? So what I'm saying is that when we're connecting the dots between the programs that we're supporting and the knowledge that we're gaining, it's looking at the trends of that impact over time in, in what I hope would be less numbers of self harm and suicidal ideation and handle with care.
Right.
That's all I'm saying is that, cause we, we as a school district are taking s- uh, mental health very seriously.
Right.
And so is the whole Commonwealth. And so we really need to see how they match up or how do the, how does it, how does it connect? And that's all I'm asking for consideration of how can we see that more? That's all.
I want to thank Mr. Retcher for his report.
Yeah, one more question.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Uh, two, but brief. Firstly, I, I didn't see any report and I don't, I, I don't know if it would fit in there, but I'm just curious to know, um, regarding response times to like AED or CPR. I don't know that we have many of those events, but is that something that you track as well?
No, that would be Dr. Kim Brandon.
Okay.
Yeah, my, my, the AEDs, all I do is in, like, we're out of school now in about a week or so. I'm going to go in and check and make sure all the AEDs are in the right per space. The batteries are all good and they have pads. That's, that's as far as I go with AEDs.
Gotcha. Okay. And then the other question that I have, and I, the reason why I asked this, I think it'd be good for not only the board, for the public to know. Uh, you've got to sit in on some of, with the knowledge that you presented here on what you've, what you and your department has done throughout the year. You also sit in and have sat in on the, the planning for the new Fountain Hill school. Could you talk to us just a little bit about some of the things that are coming into a new school from a safety aspect that we can look to see in a new building?
So I, a couple of the, uh, the things that were, deals with hardware. So hardware on the doors, right? Um, your windows, right? Safety windows, right? Safety escape windows on Fountain Hill on the first floor. Right? Because it wouldn't make sense to have them on the second and third floor, because that would be a problem. But to have first floor escapes, have um, bollards, right? Bollards placed where they need to be placed within the parking lot. In additionally, up on Moravia Street where that new entrance is going to be, you want to have that bollered it off. So some of the hard physical safety things like that. The design of the school itself looked pretty SEPTED compliant um, with how they have um, the building drawn up and the materials that they're using. So, and like I said, once, once the building is actually up and complete, I'll have Center for Safe Schools come in and do a physical site assessment. I doubt they're going to find much if anything, but it's always good to have a second set of eyes come in and, and look at camera placement. They look at the kitchens, they look at the refrigerators, they look at the hardware in the kitchen. They look to make sure that all the fire suppressant devices are where they're supposed to be. So it's not just, they, they look, when they, when they talk about building safety, they look at everything. Um, they look at what your door hardware is, right? They look at, are these the best possible things to have? Are they, you know, the openings and the locking mechanisms? So they, they provide all that. Um, so I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm pretty confident it's going to be pretty squared away.
In addition, Mr. Lozey, that double loaded corridor, like having one hallway with cu- uh, classrooms on both sides stacked on three is the response time dream of first responders because there's a logical pattern of where people are at any given time, where the current Fountain Hill Elementary School with the open concept makes that almost impossible to do.
I'm glad that both of you expanded upon that because while it's nice, hey, we're building a new school and it's great that we're building it for a community that really needs it. I think it's important people to hear all this extra intentionality and thought of having you know, the safety person sitting in on that.
Leaps and bounds compared to the old Fountain Hill.
Yeah. Other questions? Dr. Beckpulley?
Just super, super quick about the, the safe to say numbers. And I know there's a ton of variables in all of this, but I just wanted to, to, as the numbers went down, it might be entirely due to, you know, social media trends, one way or the other, but just to make sure that our students still know that that's a, like our students have the training so that that's a.
So the, the training, the training is conducted in middle school for all incoming fifth graders, fifth grader? No, sixth graders. I still get that confused. I went to Catholic school. You went, take your weight. It, it still throws me. Um, so they receive the, the, that training as a part of their health class. And there's also signs posted throughout the buildings that, you know, in reference to safe to say. So that, but they know how to use it, but, and you can tell when they first get trained, you know? Yeah, a little bit.
I would like to thank Mr. Retcher. I'm copied on all his emails. So in three areas that he presented tonight, the compliance training, whether it's new laws like act fifty five or existing laws about required codes. I see how much effort it takes for twenty two schools to be able to be compliant in those areas. And that's what Todd does. The safe to says, the handled with cares, they come in every day at all times of the day and night on weekends. And it is not unusual for me, I get them too, to reach out to Todd and say, this one looks pretty ser- serious. And it's almost always followed immediately by a well visit to the, the home or the location to follow up on it. So I want to thank you for always doing that. It's never like, ah, is this really that? Nope. It, boom, we go. And then finally, handling the tough situations. Uh, Mr. Retcher being a former Bethlehem police officer knows how to keep people safe in the moments when, when that, that could be difficult. So I want to thank you for all those times, uh, Mr. Retcher. So we're fortunate to have a full time safety person with this background and providing this report. Thank you, Todd.
All right. Thank you. Next up, Mr. Amato and Mrs. Harper with our end of the year math and reading data. You can each pick four of the fifty two slides.
We are happy to try to meet that goal. Uh, so I'd like to thank uh, Mr. Amato and Mrs. Harper. Um, this is, you know, fresh data. Um, sometimes we present this in August and I just think that our, our heads in, are in end of year right now. Um, students had their last day, uh, last Friday uh, for high school. There were makeup final exams today. But um, since we're in the end of the year, it's, it's the time to talk about where did we land with our math and literacy data? And so with that, I'll hand it over to Mr. Amato and Mrs. Harper.
I'm going to, I, when I tell you I'm going to fast forward a couple, so I, I will let, to make this one a little bit shorter, I'm sorry if I missed. I didn't realize that I was computing this mid graduation. So I, I missed an E O Y data tab at some of them at the top. I apologize for that. So, um, but know that as we go over I X L diagnostic scores, it is the, it's the beginning year, middle of the year, end of the year check. Um, and the cut scores are at or above and, and we'll go through each of them. But I want to, it, you can see this and reflect on this and email me any questions, but I want to go to grade two. Cause this grade is really, really important. So if you go to this slide and I'm going to then go to the one before that, I think is, yeah, go, no, next, sorry. That's grade one. Why I want to fixate on grade two is this grade is the reveal math grade that started in kindergarten. And so when we look at the numbers at the bottom of the average of the three year rolling average, we're looking at seventy two percent of the students at the end of the year were at or above. That is important for us because if you go to the next slide, I just want to go over the overall average. The, the cut score at grade two is at the time in May, it's two thirty to three thirty means that you're above. Um, you're at or above grade level. So almost all of our schools except three, and some of them are pretty close to the average were near at or above grade level. That is important because this group moves to grade three. And remember I talked about in previous meetings that grade three is where we start to see the dip. So I'm going to go to the next slide and look at the trend line that we're seeing here in, if you go to slide. Not this one, yeah, this one right here. If we're looking at the averages, we held pretty firm at like fifty seven and then this year we ended at like fifty seven two. So the kids were pretty stable and remain stable. Go back to slide eleven, that one, that bottom average line. So I'm predicting and I'm very hopeful that this sick, the second graders coming in the third grade, if we can maintain a seventy percent at or above average, we're, we're having some excitement coming your way later in future board reports on some of our results coming up, that this is the first P S S A grade level grade that will hit a three year going through all the way from kindergarten to third grade. They will have the reveal math curriculum and the updates. So I'm hopeful that the, this will start to, we'll start to see that in our state testing more and more. So that's why I wanted to pick out grade three. I meant grade two in particular, and then look at where grade three hopefully will be next year. And I'm going to fast forward to grade five, which is, and this is a really important one, too. Go over is that grade five? If you, if you look at grade five, as we've been talking about students at or above grade level, remember we weren't, we weren't there yet. But if you go to the next slide, this grade level here, the grade level, the cut score is five thirty to six thirty. Our average um, I X L diagnostic end of the year score is five twenty nine. This is the strongest fifth grade we are sending to middle school. And we, so like, we're starting to see the fifth grade is coming up stronger entering the middle school realm, which to me i- is really good. One of the things I, I really want to point out into this is um, found um, Dunagan Elementary School. If you look at Dunagan Elementary School on this data, they didn't, they're not blue there. They, they didn't hit the cut score at five thirty or higher. But they started at three twenty four. And they had some intense coaching and support and they ended at four sixty three. There is a major increase there in that fifth grade that is talking about proof of concept of how when we work with teachers, we follow core curriculum instruction and they start maneuvering the students at grade level. And there's more to come on Dunagan, I think that we'll be reading later on as we get finalized P S S A results. But there are some things that we're seeing in trends in data that's yielding us good results that, that I think we're, we're starting to see a marry of this work marrying over to state testing. So I'm, I'm really hopeful for that. I want to go.
Before you move on from grade five, I just want to say. Before you move on from grade five, I just want to say, um, we're really excited about, um, and we're not going to share anything until we have the official result yet, but we're excited about the grade five P S S A data, um, based off the preliminary data, and they, you know, they send
I don't want to say that, but yeah.
I, our, our P S S A data is the highest it's been in fifth grade since twenty eighteen, which is really exciting. Specifically Donegan.
I know the number. Do you want me to know the? I can say it. Donegan's last year fifth grade, if we go, now remember, this is preliminary, preliminary data, so we have to filter out some things once we, Kim and I start next week verifying and, and going into D R C world and taking care of that. But on, on a rough estimations, last year's Donegan fifth grade were only three percent at or above, or three percent proficiency ratings. If it holds firm, they're at twenty-two percent. Right? I think it was twenty-two, yeah.
So, which, and I would also add, um, when we look at, so if we know that Fountain Hill and Donegan are the feeder schools for Brockle, um, Brockle's beginning of year, um, benchmark was a three eighty-four. So that, what that really tells us is that, um, average Donegan and Fountain Hill were three eighty-four. When we look at their end of the year data, we look at Fountain Hill and Donegan combined, we're ending at four sixty-three and four forty-five. And so, like, the promising piece here is that, like, it's all kind of flowing up. And as we look at things over, we're, we're seeing on a, an annual basis minimal summer slide. So there's some, there's excitement as it relates to some math here. We're, you know, tempering expectations, we're working really hard, we're keeping our nose down, we're not celebrating yet, because, you know, twenty-two percent is a lot better, but it's not good enough. However, there, there is some improvement, which we're excited about.
What we're seeing is the concept of every school's made, every school's made gains, which is what we want to see in the math, because typically we have not seen that in math. Math has been one of our crutches on performance, and we have been seeing a decline in math performance, so. But I, this attribute work is to the coaches, but it's also to the teachers, because we've spent a lot of time working on adhering to grade level standards, following common scope and sequence, making sure unit assessments are followed, and you can see the teachers working there, their confidence has been building much stronger. And I feel like they're, they're, they're doing a really good job of that. And that's where I wanted to move, if I would highlight the middle school side, if we would go down to eighth grade. Is this, this, if you go, I'm going to go to the eighth grade slide. Because this is really powerful to me, too. This, we're going to keep going, next one. This one is really powerful, because we haven't seen this either. So if you look at the, the, the eighth grade, now again, we're not at grade level, so I need to be clear there. But this is the strongest eighth grade we are sending to the high school with an average I X L, di- average I X L diagnostic score of seven oh-two. So it's the strongest we've sent. I mean, we were before, we were like in the far four hundreds, five hundreds. And now we're getting them up higher, so we're closing gaps and we're maintaining them at grade level more and more. I also think that's the work of the middle school teachers, and you could see that in their data, they're adhering to a common scope and sequence. All math classes are looking the same. Our Desmos curriculum is working. We're doing conceptualization before formalization, we're working hard to solve math. One of our indicators is, who is doing the math? We're not just working out problems in front of students. They are doing the math. And it's not a lot of math problems, it's good math problems where students are having a productive struggle. And that's been a lot of the work that we've been doing. So that's why I wanted to highlight these couple segmented grades, because this is going to, if not the meeting will go really long.
And the last thing I'll share is, uh, preliminarily, when we look at eighth grade data, we're seeing the highest scores on P S S A since at twenty fifteen. I only went back as far as twenty fifteen, which is ten years back. So, um, again, we weren't great then, but, uh, we are trending most certainly in the right direction, which I'm really pleased about.
And the mean scores of growth for every grade level in I X L has gotten higher. And so we, we did publish a report with I X L, they, they analyzed our data. They did a, a doctoral, like, standard research analysis and did a correlation. We released our P S S A data then. And there was good correlation between predictability levels of how the kids were doing in I X L and what it was producing in relationship to their P S S A scores. And we're seeing that in some of our recent early released data that we were pretty impressive. I mean, I think Maureen was calling me and like jumping through the phone practically, and then making some phone calls to principals, who were also jumping through the phone about some of the work. So keeping our fingers crossed that it shakes out permanently that way. So.
You can skip ahead. Keep going, twenty-four, my god, you go to twenty-seven. Keep going. There you go, twenty-seven, there you go. Nope, twenty-seven, yep. Thanks. Okay. So the challenge is to keep both balls in the air at the same time, because we, um, have some work to do in literacy. I'm going to focus on the kindergarten slide here. With the data table, we do, um, have some bounce back. We have six, six schools at or above ninety percent. Um, I do want to call attention to, um, Hanover was, was at a hundred at, at middle of year, they maintained that. ASA jumped up, that's probably one kid. Um, they're at ninety-eight percent, so kudos to them. Calypso at ninety-six. Marvine, once again, they started at thirty-seven percent, benchmarked under at ninety percent, so, um, kudos to them. And then Thomas Jefferson, uh, also, um, had a higher end of year than they've had, uh, in the last bit. So, um, they are at ninety-one percent, and then, um, Miller Heights didn't have as far to grow, but they, they, uh, they did show growth, so, so we are, are proud of that. The next slide, uh, this is what I'm going to focus on for the rest of the grades. This is our effectiveness report, because this is the matched cohort. So students who were here for both benchmark periods, beginning and, and end of year. So, um, kindergarten, we, we do pretty well in kindergarten. You can see, we do have a little bit of slippage in the bottom two those. Remember the pill bar is where they started and the rainbow is where they ended. So, um, a little bit of, um, slippage from those who started the year at or above benchmark. But we really do see, um, good growth. We are down to sixty-nine students who are still, um, well below benchmark. And, um, you know, we have not yet had a chance to talk with principals about the data because of, of the timing. We'll be seeing them, um, in the next week. But, um, those are always a focus to see what's happening. Are those students that are maybe on the path to becoming, uh, in our M T S S process? They might have some additional supports that they need. But, um, overall, we, we started them strong, we started, uh, those who started strong, we kept, uh, primarily strong. And then we did grow those below benchmark students quite significantly, and about half of the well below benchmark. You can skip ahead, please, to, should be slide thirty-one. Keep going. Thirty-one, keep going. There you go. Thank you. Um, this is our first grade, and so the big challenge between grades one through five is that, um, we have slippage from students who were at or above benchmark, who ended the year below or well below, and not enough students making up, first of all, you don't want to lose anybody, but then not, um, having enough gains on the other side. So, um, as we saw at middle of the year, we do see good growth with our below benchmark students. They've started the year below benchmark. We, we do see that we get, you know, more than half of them to be at or above benchmark. But those who started the, we, we don't want to see them slip, so twenty-two of those kids did slip down to well below. And then the well below benchmark kids, we have a persistent group that, um, you can see sixty-five percent of them who started well below are still well below. Um, and we also, um, I don't have it showing here, but we also then look at their pathway of progress to see, you know, if they are. It's one thing to be well below, but you're on a well above typical pathway, because that means you're making up ground. But, um, we still see a good chunk of those students on, on a below or well below typical pathway. So we'll be talking to principals, um, and teachers about that. You can skip into the next rainbow chart, right there, thirty-four, yep. Grade two, again, um, we did not lose as many students who were at or above benchmark, so that's good. We still want to shrink that down to zero, but it was a smaller percentage. But, um, again, we had, um, persistent group, a hundred forty-nine of those students who were well below benchmark at the start of the year are still well below benchmark. And just, uh, about forty-four percent of them are on a well below or below typical pathway. So we'll be looking into, um, what we're doing for those students. You can skip to the next, yep, thirty-seven. This is grade three. Um, as we've talked, um, many a time, the older they get, the longer it takes to intervene, and the more work that it takes to close those gaps. So again, um, those students who are, who started the year above benchmark, um, we did not lose too many. We lost, we lost, uh, more than I would like to, um, to at benchmark, but only one student in that group went from at benchmark to, or well above to, um, below. We, we lost more kids than I would like from at benchmark. I know it's the smaller number, thirty-eight, but thirty-eight is too many, so it's thirty-eight too many. So we want to, uh, maintain those students at or above. Um, and then, um, again, we saw this at middle of year, we, we are growing our kids who are started the year below benchmark, but those well below benchmark, um, are, too many of them stayed well below. Grade four, you can, yep, right there. Uh, we had, it's Washington, so you see the same, the same data trends. Fifth grade, you can go ahead, uh, scroll down a little bit, there it is, yep. Um, and then fifth grade, again, same thing. We did not, again, um, we've talked, you don't forget how to read. You know, if you, if you have it, you tend to keep it unless you have some kind of, you know, um, traumatic brain injury or something that happens. Um, and so we really, um, don't see as many kids dropping, but we, um, have that students who started well below or below, um, we'd like to grow more of them. Middle of year, yep, you can go to slide forty-five. I'm, I'm sorry, middle school, not middle of year, middle school. We have our grade six data, and when you look, um, six, seven, and eight, you can see we did, um, have some slippage from middle of year to end of year. I think, uh, sixth grade, um, was perhaps a little less. But, um, remember sixth grade is the same test essentially as fifth grade, we're just with different passages. And then we, um, we can look at the next slide with the effectiveness report there. Grade six, definitely way more students dropping from at benchmark, um, to below than we would like. Grade seven, remember we have the gating test, uh, I'm sorry, no, um, you can do the, um, that, keep, um, so right there, yes, I'm sorry, right there. Thank you. My apologies, I got myself. Let's sit around. Remember we have the gates, so we have the, we report all students who made it just by the first one, first gate, and then the students who went through however many they need gates they needed to, to get benchmarked. You can go ahead down to slide forty-nine. We do now have the effectiveness reports for grade seven and eight. That was a, a newer feature they added for us. Um, and so you can see those students, um, sixty-five of them dropped from at benchmark from beginning of year to end of year, and the below benchmark, we have too many kids that have dropped. We know it will take longer. We don't have pathways yet for grade seven and eight. So that would be something, hopefully, um, they'll be developing, because by the time you're in seventh grade, it will take longer, so it is realistic that you would still be at below benchmark. We'd like to, or well below, we'd like to see how, how much you're making up ground though. Because if you have a student, you know, in seventh grade, reading at a second or third grade level, they're not going to make up five years worth in one year, um, most likely. And then eighth grade, yeah, you can jump right to that one. You can see we had, you know, fifty-two percent of them who started the year below benchmark actually went backwards, so that's not the direction we want to go. So we will be meeting with principals and developing, uh, plan to get back on track.
Why do you suppose?
Well, there's a lot of reasons, um, and I, again, not having, uh, had the chance to debrief with the principals. We are, we still continue to train a large number of new teachers each year. We are still finding they're not coming with the prerequisite knowledge that we'd like, so we're trying to catch up there. We also need to get back to some, uh, tighter instructional practices. We will be having a big focus this coming year on, um, increased opportunities to respond for students. So, um, if you've been in classrooms and you see, you know, sometimes we'll be saying, I want a quiet bubble in your mouth, and one who's going to be my friend who answers, we need every kid answering the question and having the opportunities to, get in the repetitions and the practice, because when one kid answers, that's one kid getting practice. When all twenty kids answer, now twenty kids are getting practice. So that's going to be a big focus, um, for us.
Other questions? Dr. Beckpulley?
Yeah, I'll keep it brief, but like, I can't help myself. Amazing stuff. The, the, the things that had jumped out to me was how sort of stubborn that well below benchmark was. And so, um, just to make sure, give, as we're looking financial plans out multiple years, as staffing is a big concern, just that, that we as a board understand what, what those students in particular are going to need, and we're, we're sure that the additional supports that are required to that sort of crew, um, remain available. And just sort of like a, I don't know if this is a, I was, it, it's interesting. One of the things that's been really interesting to me, watching these numbers in reading, and we've been watching reading longer than math, but watching reading for as long as we have, that, um, the amazing thing is that our school, across our elementary schools, as we've been monitoring it, they all look pretty similar. Even though our elementary schools vary in lots of different ways, the reading scores tend to look similar. Um, and there's not this huge variation across our buildings, um, and there seemed to be in math. And so I don't know if there's something, like, about the learning math, if that teaches us anything that, you know, we're sort of well worn now on this sort of early literacy skills that we love for our kindergartners to get with their families as their preschoolers. Like, I don't know what that equivalent is in math, or, uh, it was just interesting to me, the, the variation in, in our buildings, that it's amazing that we don't see to the same degree in reading, but was popping up in math, and I was just curious about that.
I would offer that, um, I can't, it's not an, I, I don't have an, an exact response for you, but I have a, a few hypotheses that I think that, um, one thing we're noticing is when we give and I, I would reference Stunney, and Donegan's got some very specific, high, uh, concentrated coaching in the teaching of math. And so one thing that Mr. Amato and I are always, you know, ta- singing our song about everybody's a math person, right? But inevitably, an elementary education teacher doesn't typically sign up to teach elementary school, because they're like, because I can't wait to teach math, right? And so, um, I think that there are a lot of open minds as it relates to that. Some people are, uh, individuals are very excited about the notion of teaching math. But what we're noticing, I think, is, um, so, like, and I referenced Donegan in that, they had a massive, I would say, injection of energy, and then we saw that payoff. And so when we can support our teachers in concentrated ways to help them elevate their core instruction practices, we do see the return on investment. And so I think, um, we see a mix of, um, you know, in s- in some households, there might be more math conversation versus others, and we have to endeavor to, be the reason why they're being successful because of school, not because of, uh, you know, that their natural environment. And so I think we're endeavoring to do that, but I do think we see that stratification. Um, and I can't explain exactly why, but I do think that we are, um, doing some things to close those gaps, which I feel good about.
I'm just wondering, uh, and this comes from a conversation I had with, um, a constituent, about still the effects of the, the pandemic and the, like, reading loss that was associated with this. I mean, I just imagine this will echo through for years, you know, and I, I don't know if there's a way to measure that or figure that out.
I mean, we're inevitably going to talk about that probably for the next fifteen years, too. Because the kids who are entering kindergarten were, for the most part, born during the pandemic, which was a tricky time, and then back that up a little bit, like, our current kindergartners would have been about one-ish. And then, like, really critical formative periods of time, and then just keep going, like, as the kids get older, what point? I, I would say that, I think I speak first, we're choosing not to use that as an excuse for anything, but we do think it sometimes is a, a qualifier. is a qualifier, right? It, it helps provide a little additional context.
In August twenty twenty, if you were, I said, the results would make a grown man cry, meaning myself. We did say it. And, you know, a lot of hard work is building it back, uh, doing the, what we know works. It's not as if we don't know what the strategy of what works is. It's just the, uh, you know, the persistence, that staying to it, the keeping our teachers trained. That's an, that's a non, that never stops. That's a never ending challenge. So, uh, there's work to do, but Maureen's right, we're not blaming any pandemics. We're not, we just have work to do, to focus on reading and math at the same time. So the kids can access great level work, no matter whether it's in, in reading or it's in math. We need that so that students get to high school and have an opportunity for the career and college paths.
All right. Other questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. Ramado, Mrs. Harper, Dr. Leeson. Thank you, Dr. Burris. You're back. Update on our recruitment and hiring.
Welcome back, Mr. Fontaine.
Good evening. If you could pull up the present. Thank you. Mr. Fontaine, Fontainez and I just put together quickly some, uh, numbers just to review some information about what had occurred this year, as well as what we're looking to do into the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Uh, this, this year, we attended a number of recruitment events, especially those with our partner universities like ESU, Meravian and Lehigh. Uh, we also went to one of the largest recruitment affairs, uh, in Millersville University. We continue to, uh, hold our membership with handshake, which allows us to look at recruitment events. But what we noticed this year were a number of the recruitment events were occurring after most of our postings had already closed. Which was good for us. We were out ahead, but then, you know, to go to recruitment events when we don't have any postings, it, you know, it kinda is, uh, behind putting the cart before the horse. Uh, we do, uh, and have can, uh, allow, put funds, uh, in next year's budget for career events, registration and travel. And we're also, uh, participating and looking to, uh, integrate with some apprentice programs. Uh, I know there are discussions with the Sales University as well as, uh, people from my department will be attending the Second Annual Eastern Ed Leadership Forum, which is developing pathways to teaching, uh, which will occur at L Tri C in July.
And then our, our next slide is basically broken apart by all of the departments. So we had the HR team pull together, um, each department, um, break it apart into, uh, different demographics such as gender and ethnicities. Rather than go through each of these numbers, the next slide, I'll start to summarize them up a little bit, and then you can kind of look through, um, for detailed. But our overall summary, about a hun- a hundred and ninety-nine total hires, and that was from, uh, July of last year until May nineteenth. Cause this report, all these numbers were pulled on May twentieth. The hiring reflects, you know, uh, our commitment that we continue to look at these reports of, you know, these, this was something that we weren't necessarily pulling up and, and discussing as much as we do now. But we had forty-eight Hispanic staff members that were hired, fourteen black, four Asian and one American Indian. The representation of women in the workforce that remains strong with a hundred and sixty-eight females hired compared to thirty-one males. Um, and I think that's kind of evident when you, when you even walk around school districts. Our job class highlights, our teachers made up the largest hiring group with seventy-four new hires. Um, you can see the breakdown there of nine staff of color. Our teacher aides, they represented a diverse hiring pool where we had forty-five hires toll, um, in total. And then we had eighteen Hispanic, seven black and two Asian aides that were hired. Our long-term sub and bus driver monitors also contributed meaningfully to our workforce diversity. Oh, one of the things I will mention with the teacher aids, that's not there, but it was sixty-two females and twelve males. Um, and then when you look over at the gender breakdown, the district continues to show strong female workforce participation. Opportunities may exist to encourage more men to apply for support staff and teaching aid roles, um, as they were overwhelmingly female. So our next slide is really just looking at three, three points here for equity observation. We had thirty-four percent of the new hires that identify as non-white. Growth is visible in paraprofessional and support roles, especially among Hispanic and black employees. But there's still a lot of work to do and opportunities that we need to look for when it comes to increasing diversity and certified teaching roles and administration.
We're going to continue to increase our partnerships with the HBCUs. Uh, we're also going to, uh, look at our hiring goals for the twenty-five and twenty-six, uh, especially in the areas of teacher and leadership pipelines. Uh, we're going to explore mentorships and retention strategies. And the next slide, I'll, I'll go over one of our plans. And we're, uh, we're going to continue with the stay interviews, uh, that Mr. Fontainez had done a small mini, uh, stay interview. But next fall, we're going to look to expand that into, uh, the full teacher ranks. With that, a stay interview or a retention survey, uh, that's a proactive approach. I know Mr. Lozzy had asked me about exit interviews and those are continuing. I had one today. I have another one tomorrow and trying to reschedule yet. Uh, one that was, uh, uh, miss, uh, scheduling on that. So, and then those individuals who have not called to schedule an in-person meeting with me, instead of the individuals, uh, having to go on to the, uh, district webpage, go into, uh, their account, find, uh, the exit interview form. I have converted that into a Google survey, which I will then be emailing them directly. So they, it will come right to them. Not only will that be easier for the individuals, but it'll also be easier to, uh, collect the data because we'll have that. And then we can look at things. We don't have to manually analyze everything through the survey. But with the, uh, stay interviews, those are a proactive approach, uh, to gather teacher feedback and retention factors that could contribute to why individuals would, are staying at the Bethlehem area school district. Uh, what we'll be doing is compiling questions that have been vetted either through doctoral, uh, studies and/or through other organizations that are, uh, have put together stay interviews. I want to pair and look at those, uh, that have similar questions that would be, uh, reflect what we're asking on our exit interviews and see if there's any correlation there. Uh, we would review this with the union leadership. They already are aware that we're going to be looking at doing this and they've, uh, given us the nod of approval. But when we get the questions, we'll be, uh, giving those, uh, to them ahead of time, just so that they know what is coming. Uh, we'll be looking at our best delivery platform. Uh, again, we want to maintain that it is an anonymous survey. Uh, but we will, uh, have a, uh, question in there if somebody would want to participate in a focus group where we can then dig a little deeper. Uh, and, and, uh, Mr. Fontainez and I will be looking at our timeline for distribution, collection and analysis of the data. So again, a little bit of where we're, what happened during, uh, this school year, as well as what we're looking to do, uh, the next school year.
And I know when we did the stay interviews last year, it was much more successful when we did the survey part of it. Just quick numbers, we asked eighty-four people to do an in-person interview and only seventeen said yes and, and reached back out. But when we asked eighty people to take a survey, forty-one of them did it. So, um, you know, that was just like a little pilot to see, oh, oh, it seems like that's better.
Do you offer virtual, like a Zoom meeting for your?
Yeah.
Or they have to come in person?
No, no, we've offered both. Yeah. Actually, I think more of the set, the seventeen were actually virtual.
Yeah, okay.
That's more convenient for people.
This all takes place in the context of a very difficult year for public schools in diversity, equity and inclusion matters, as well as teacher certification numbers coming into the pipeline for hire. The fact that, and I want to thank Dr. Burris and Mr. Fontainez for continuing on the work. But the fact that this district is making this presentation today is far more than what is, uh, common right now in the environment that we're talking about. The fact that, uh, we are collecting data, we're, we're trying our best, we're reaching out at a time where federal response to, uh, diversity, equity and inclusion were reasons why people wanted to withdraw funding from school districts. We avoided that type of conversation in this committee. We've always said, we're not signing any attestation that says that our DEI is. And so, um, that wasn't mentioned in one of the slot, in any of the slides, but I want that noted that the Bethlehem area school district still has a fundamental contextual philosophy that is supported by these approaches, even if sometimes we don't have as much success, uh, as we would want. We always aspire.
Questions? Mr. Lozzy.
I, I took a lot of notes. I'm not going to really ask anything to do with, with my notes, except for this. I noticed that you all noticed that, um, when we look at the diversity of the new hires, which I think would probably be disproportionately similar to current employees out of the teaching ranks, there are far more women than men, which is not a bad thing. But we do have a lot of our young people who are not seeing men in the classroom, particularly men of color in the classroom. I'm curious to know, because that's something that you noticed, are there any thoughts or not any thoughts? Is there part of the plan in, uh, in reaching out to any sort of groups that involve, men of color, BIPOC men who are in education and seeing how we can build that pipeline? So that's part A. And part B, is there any way, and I don't know if this is honestly, if it's legal or appropriate, that there could be something created here, um, with, um, the men in our district who are teaching to encourage young men to go into teaching. There was a boy who graduated, got a sports scholarship. That boy should be a teacher. Told him that his whole life, wants nothing to do with it. Told him in the parking lot of Stabber, he just rolled his eyes. I hope he becomes a teacher. Are we doing anything about that?
I mean, that's a, a great idea. The only thing I could say is that we could try to get creative. A lot of our schools right now are trying to do a lot of mentorship programs. And I don't know if we're specifically looking for male teachers, which is a great idea. You know, like when we go to our court team meetings, uh, that this has been brought up a lot. And I'll gladly throw that out there to see how we could get, because I think a lot of our, our male educators would jump all over, uh, uh, an opportunity like that because they, they, they understand it. You know, they're, they're living it.
Then the, the other part of that question now expands out of just the, the male BIPOC sector, but just, um, in the BIPOCs, in the BIPOC sector, when we're looking at teach, at teachers of color and we're looking at who's in our district. Are there ways that we could also not, so we're talking about how we're talking with those folks and doing those interviews, but kind of doing the same thing, like how are we getting? Trying to say it in a way that's not crass. And that, no, that's hard.
That's hard for you.
That's hard. Are there ways that we could also provide? Are there ways that we could also provide options for our teachers of color and administrators of color to, if they're not going with you all to these retention or to these recruitment opportunities to go with you? So not only you are singing the song, but they say, let me tell you my experience.
And they have. And, and I open up, uh, when I have the dates, I put the notice out to all the administrators and they can sign up. But I can give you the list of people who did attend this year.
Other questions? See none. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate the report and appreciate the continued efforts. It's probably easy just to find, you know, young twenty-something year old teachers, but to go out and look for teachers that are within our students is not easy. And I appreciate the work and the effort. Thank you both. All right. Uh, that is it, Dr. Burris?
That is it.
All right. Agenda items. The first one we already covered, that was policy seven oh six, that will, you will see that next Monday night. The next three are annual agreements. The first one is the renewal of our EAP program. It's a two-year renewal that is for our employees, um, counseling services, um, as well as other job related issues. Four point oh three is our FID days, flexible instructional days for the upcoming twenty-five, twenty-six school year. And four point oh four is tuition waiver students. And you see the list of, um, students there and how many days they'll be with us out of compliance or out of residency. Questions on any of those items? See none, then we'll, all those will roll forward for next Monday night for the agenda. That will take us to courtesy, the floor. Mr. Antolik, you good? All right. Do you have the answer to the trivia question yet?
Help me wait.
Nope.
Nope.
To be continued. Anything for open forum? We will, Dr. White, go ahead.
Just very quickly, um, in, in reflection of attending both of the high school graduation ceremonies, filled with joy and, and accomplishment and pride. The, the thing that is so wonderful for us board members who are sitting so close to the stage and seeing the students coming back after they, they walk across and shake a few hands. The teachers that walk up to them and give them hugs and high fives and, and the whoops and the, and the hoots and all that. I mean, there really is a, a symbol of, or, or, or an indicator of the joyfulness of these relationships. And when the stu-, when the student speakers are naming off their teachers and thanking them as well, it, it's just such a wonderful moment. And, and I, and I just think that, you know, the work that the HR department is doing to support our teachers and our staff and our admins, it's, it's really incredible. And when you see it all come together in that beautiful joyful moment, it's just, we have a great district. And, and it's, I just want to say thank you all for your tireless work. It really, it really shows. So thank you.
All right. Anything else? We will have exec session for contract negotiation, personnel and legal updates. If there's nothing else, we are adjourned.